Can we start again? Good afternoon and welcome to the special meeting of the City of Glendale Commission on the Status of Women. Would we stand for the flag salute, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
May I have the roll call, please?
Commissioner Brusalian?
Here.
Commissioner Burns?
Present.
Magron?
Present.
Perion?
Present.
Semergen? Ex officio Alfred?
Present.
Ex officio Austin is running a little behind today.
Thank you. May I have the next item, please?
Sure. Item 1B, Report Regarding the Posting of the Agenda. The agenda for the August 30, 2018, special meeting was posted on the bulletin board outside of City Hall on August 27, 2018. Item 2, Introductions and Presentations. Item 2A, Introduction of New Commissioner Susan Brusalian.
Good evening, Chair Burns, Commissioners. My name is Susan Brusalian and I've been a resident in our beautiful city of Glendale for over 30 years. I'm an active board member with the College Hills Community Association and have been over the past 20 years. I'm involved with the Glendale Hills Coordinating Council, Glendale Homeowners Coordinating Council, and I do as much as possible to support their organization and causes. Throughout most of my life, my daily routine has always included assisting others with the needs of the elderly, mostly women, and I always do my best to lend a helping hand to assist the disadvantaged women in finding jobs, helping them navigate through the process, and getting back on their feet. And without even giving it a second thought, I find myself extending my assistance to help those in need, people who may be going through extremely difficult and unthinkable times, helping them as much as I can, making sure they get their basic needs met at the very least. Being appointed Commissioner on this dais will help me in continuing my personal mission to help others in need, especially women and girls, raising awareness on discrimination, assisting in the already established and new important causes in our community, and fulfilling my goals, helping other women prevented from achieving their personal goals in life. Giving back to the community enriches my life profoundly, especially issues like these which are close to my heart. I also want to thank Councilmember Najarian for having the faith in nominating me and ultimately helping me get appointed to this commission. I will do my utmost to fulfill my duties as Commissioner. I want to extend a special thank you to Christine Powers for her assistance in acclimating me through this process. Thank you all very much and I look forward to working closely with all of you.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Welcome. Thank you. Next item on the agenda, please.
Item 2B, Recognition of Outgoing Commissioners, Zeda Fojian.
Zeda, could you come up to the front, please? I'm just going to ask Commissioner and Commissioner to say a few words to you and then I'm going to come down and hug you.
Okay.
Go ahead.
Zeda, we appreciate you, as I've known you for many, many years. So Zeda's son and my husband have been friends for a very long time and it's been an honor working with you on this commission. We wish you well. I know you're very active in the community and you will continue to be active. I see your pictures everywhere in the community. So hopefully we will work together and we'll see you around and we appreciate everything that you've done for this community. Thank you.
I echo Dr. Magron's thoughts. Thank you so much. I've learned a great deal from you and it was a great inspiration working with you on this very important commission.
Thank you. I would like to say thank you. It was really touchy and I was honored to serve on commission on the status of woman for many years, also serving my community. And thank you Commissioners, thank you Linda, and thank you Christine, and thank you all for working together, and I'm wishing you all a healthy, happy, and successful year. I'm here to help if you need it. Thank you all and God bless you.
Thank you.
The City of Glendale recognizes Zeda for her two and years outstanding service to the commission's status. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Next.
Item 2C, Presentation, Glendale Health Festival, Armenian American Medical Society, Dr. Zarmina Nakashian.
Hello. Good evening, Chair Burns, Commissioners, and City staff. My name is Dr. Zarmina Nakashian and I am representing the Armenian American Medical Society and I'm going to be talking regarding the Glendale Health Festival. So just to give a little bit of history, this event or this, this event has been started in 1995 and it was being held in the hall of the church, but like for many years and then, so that's the way the volunteers, healthcare professionals, volunteer healthcare professionals were providing their services to the community members. And in the past eight years, so this event took like a bigger scale and it is being held in the Pacific Community Center and then so it is open to whole community members. And many more organizations brought their participation. In its, last year, for example, we had seen 700 participants and then there were like 70-plus healthcare professionals delivering their expertise to the community members and then in five hours, 230 blood tests were performed and then like lipids and glucose, blood pressure was taken, 243 patients were seen for their eye checks and then 212 were received prescription eyeglasses. Children were, children's eyes were also screened and then eyeglasses were delivered. And UST School of Dentistry had provided screening to the teeth of 200 men and women and also 148 people received flu shots and 17 women received mammogram at the White Memorial Medical Center. So this year, the event is going to be taking place in November, November 3rd, Saturday, and November 4th, Sunday. It's going to be a longer hour, 6:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. And this year, the Armenian American Medical Society has been collaborating with RAM. RAM stands for Remote Area Medical. And this organization, their focus is like recruiting volunteers and then delivering eye care and dental care. So there is going to be therapeutic clinics, meaning that teeth are not only only screened but like extraction, feeling are going to be provided. So there is going to be dental clinic for two days, in other words. So people can come, they can be checked and then they're going to get treatment. The same way their eyes, so like they can come and then they're going to be screened at the same time. If they need glasses, glasses are going to be provided on the spot. So it's going to be a larger volume, so most of the people who don't have benefits for dental or eye, so this is a very good opportunity. A lot of time people can have health insurance, but their benefits can be limited, but this is like a free service that they can be benefiting from and then it's a two-day event. In addition to this, still the nurses, the Armenian American Nurses Association will be providing blood tests. It is going to be point-of-care testing, meaning that on the spot they can know the results. And blood pressure is going to be checked, too. Mental health providers are going to be there for consultation. And also, there is going to be mobile van to do mammograms. So all women who don't have insurance and/or they have limited benefits of their insurance, they can have their mammograms done during this day. And people who need to have pap smears done, we're going to be providing vouchers so that later on they can go to Adventist Health, White Memorial to have their pap test done. So there is going to be also flu shots, blood work, cancer screening, mental health evaluation, general medical physicals, women's health, mammograms, hearing tests, medical consultations, onsite drug disposals, and food and entertainment. So this is an event that the whole family can come, they can spend the whole day there, like there is going to be entertainment, food. At the same time, there is going to be services provided and education being provided, too.
Would you tell me exactly where it's going to be again?
Okay. It's going to be held on Saturday, November 3rd, and Sunday, November 4th. So it's a two-day event and it's going to be held at Pacific Community Center in 541 South Pacific Avenue in Glendale.
Thank you. I'd like to ask our attorney something. Are we allowed to discuss the possibility of supporting this event financially right now?
You are not, only because it's not listed as an action item. You can have general discussion about what was presented to you at this time, but you can't make a decision and take action on supporting it in a, you can't move on it in any way.
So there's no point in discussing it if we can't move on it?
You can't commit financially, but you can certainly make other general decisions that is perhaps individual to lend support in that way or make a personal commitment to do something, but you won't be able to move as a body to commit finances to it at this time.
I do. Thank you. We appreciate your presentation, also the generous donation of doctors and whoever is there to present and serve our community. First question was, is there any income verification that you check the status? Any family can, no income verification?
No. We don't check any income verification. So everybody can come, so it doesn't matter whether they work, they don't work, they have insurance, they don't have insurance, that is not asked.
So you serve them.
So, but like at the beginning of the event, they're going to be signing a consent that they're allowing us to examine them. So there is a consent process. So that has to be fulfilled before they can enter into the event.
Event, okay. The second question I had that you talked about mental health evaluations, so I'm assuming there are sides or doctors evaluating?
Yes.
And what if there's diagnosis or any kind of follow-up and how do we do that or how is the process done?
Okay, so like once there is screening done, there are community clinics. We have the list of the community clinics already, we have compiled it, and then each especially they have their own community outreach clinics that we refer. So this is an important event and then so this is a screening and now this year it's going to be therapeutic. So if we screen people and then we find out that they have a problem, we're not going to be letting them go like unattended. So the purpose of this event is to channel them through community clinics where they can go and then reevaluate it and then they can be followed up. So that's the purpose, so that we can have a healthy community.
Got it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Doctor, for your presentation. I am a member myself of the medical society. I didn't catch the dates.
It's November 3rd, which is a Saturday. It's, we're going to be starting 6:00 a.m. and it's going to be ending 6:00 p.m. And Sunday, also November 4th, we're going to be there, too. And it's going to be in Pacific Community Center, 541 South Pacific Avenue. So because parking is limited, like we kind of arranged with the City of Glendale so we can have parking spots designated and then the shuttles will be bringing the participants into the event center and then taking it back. So there is always ongoing shuttles, so people do not have, they don't have to worry about parking. There are going to be parking centers designated, but like as we get closer to the event, it's going to be advertised on the TV.
Right. Thank you.
Thank you very much for coming.
Yeah, I think this is a good time to thank all the participants in the past, so like I just want to list, I mean, it's always good to extend gratitude to all the organizations that work tirelessly to make this event successful. So I would like to extend my gratitude to City of Glendale, Glendale Community Services and Parks Department. Obviously, they work very hard to provide that 541 South Pacific Avenue, the community center because they have to do modifications to adjust the day to accommodate us. And also Office of State Senator Anthony Portantino, Office of Assemblyman Laura Friedman, Los Angeles County Department of Public Health, Northwest Glendale Alliance Club and Friends in Sight, the Armenian American Nurses Association, Armenian American Mental Health Association, Glendale Healthy Kids, Unicunt, a Community Center, Adventist Health Glendale, Dignity Health Glendale Memorial Hospital, and USC Verdugo Hills Hospital. So thank you, all the organizations for extending their participation to make this event successful.
I have a question, Doctor. Where did you say this was being advertised?
It is advertised in, on the buses, there are banners, then the overpass banners also, and then the month of October, we, every week when there is a TV show, Dr. Sepelian's show, like it's advertised on there, too. And in the newspapers, it is advertised, in the radio, it is advertised. So I think it catches the eye of somebody, you know, like on the bus, I think the bus, the public transportation, it is on the bus, so people see that, too. I think it's because this is the ninth year, people are kind of anticipating this event and they're following. But obviously, there is always a rank of people that is new for them, so.
And the screenings, are they done on-site there?
The screenings are done on the site.
And then, let's say dental work or eye care, is that done there as well?
This year, yes.
On the same day?
On-site, it's going to be provided. So it's going to be screening and therapeutic, so it's not only screening, so like treatment is going to be offered, too.
Wow, okay.
So it's going to be like an active clinic.
Terrific. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for the time.
Thank you so much for coming. Did I understand that you were going to change directions at this point?
Not yet.
Not yet?
Not yet.
Okay.
Move on to the next item.
May I have the next item on the agenda, please?
Sure.
Item 2D, Presentation, Forensics and DNA Lab, City of Glendale Police Department, Dr. Catherine Nguyen.
Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, Chair Burns, Commissioners, and City staff. My name is Catherine Nguyen and I am the DNA laboratory supervisor. I'll actually just be presenting on the DNA unit today. I'd love to come back and talk about our whole lab if you'd have me. So just for a little background, the laboratory, the DNA unit was founded using $1.5 million in grant funds secured by Congressman Adam Schiff. And in 2013, the DNA unit obtained accreditation in addition to existing services that were already offered by the Glendale Police Department. That includes our forensic services unit, which does crime scene investigations, latent print analysis and processing, and also entry into the National Integrated Ballistics Information Network. And there is also an existing computer forensics laboratory. So the laboratory services actually encompasses all of those functions, including a DNA unit. In 2014, the DNA lab was granted access to the Combined DNA Index System, which is the database of known individuals that we can search DNA profiles against. And in 2015, we received a very generous grant of $250,000 from the Community Foundation of the Verdugos for a DNA justice project. So the forensic biology unit staff started with three individuals, myself included. We happen to be all women, two DNA analysts, and our lab manager, Lisa Brewer, who recently retired. Since then, over the last six years, we have expanded our laboratory to a whopping four full-time DNA analysts and an hourly employee who handles evidence processing. This crime-fighting team of full-time employees actually all have their masters and I have my PhD. They have performed DNA testing for over 30 local, regional, and federal law enforcement agencies. Since 2012, the DNA unit alone has received approximately 2,300 case submissions. And this video actually highlights one of the cases that was worked last year. So is there a way to play the video? I'm sorry, do you mind?
These are just some of the women solving high-profile murders in the South Lab. It's a nearly-all-female forensics team. One of their most recent cases began with a string of deadly robberies and a clue left behind at American. I must restart it. These are just some, these are just some of the women solving high-profile murders in the South Lab. It's a nearly-all-female forensics team. One of their most recent cases began with a string of deadly robberies and a clue left behind at American Market in Glendale.
One of the suspect had dropped a hat when he left, when he was fleeing from the scene of the robbery.
In that Glendale robbery, no one was killed, but that hat would be a key piece of evidence for this forensics team. In the 80s, the Verdugo Crime Lab was predominantly men, and when asked why now mostly women, there's no solid answer.
I think it's a combination of the CSI and people understanding what a crime lab is, as well as a lot of women going into biological sciences in college.
DNA was carefully taken off that hat and processed. It would inevitably put an end to two deadly robberies that followed.
There was two robberies and during those robberies, there were two murders and both of them were in the city of L.A. We were able to connect those to a robbery that occurred here in the city of Glendale.
One of those murders happened at a Chevron gas station in Los Feliz. The robber shot and killed the clerk, a grad student, working his way through school. The other deadly robbery happened at Amar Vista Marijuana Dispensary, where the owner was shot and killed.
They were shot for no reason. I mean, both clerks complied with the robber and the robber just, without any thought, just shot both of these individuals to death.
Detectives knew more lives were at risk and needed to work quick. A suspect description and video led both agencies to piece together that white hat left behind in Glendale and the two L.A. murders.
The suspect whose DNA sample was identified had been arrested here in Glendale a couple years ago for felony and then subsequently, he had to submit a DNA sample into the database and that's how we were able to get the match.
Lieutenant Bob Zeradin credits his nearly-all-female forensics team in solving the case and saving lives.
It's so gratifying to know that we were able to get those, that evidence processed that quick and get those two monsters off the street really quick before there is someone else. and get those two monsters off the street really quick before they hurt someone else.
So outside of the extraordinary work done by our laboratory in regards to solving these types of cases, what I'm really proud of, the members within our lab, is the amount of outreach that we do. So whether it's participating in the annual Glendale Police Department Open House, you can see, hopefully, we're inspiring a new generation of crime scene investigators. With the direction of women into science, technology, engineering, and mathematics, I think that we are often looking for ways for women to participate, whether it's in medicine, in nursing, industry, or education. But forensics is a way for women to serve their community and also use a scientific background as well. So in addition to the outreach from the open house, we've also put on forensic days for high school students. Girl Scout troops have come in to receive their forensic badge and they really participate in all the services that the lab has to offer, including, and most of it is worn by our forensic services unit. We have homegrown individuals from La Crisena or the Glendale community. Michelle Machikian actually attended Crisena Valley High School, so she has participated in the career fair. I have participated in a career panel for my alma mater, UCLA, and she has also gone and speak about careers in forensic science at local high schools. Just recently, we have also participated in Camparosi Tour. And we just want to continue to reinforce the role of women within law enforcement. That's outside, that uses science. In addition to that, we have a very robust mentorship program within the Crime Lab that involves internships. So here are a couple of our initial interns. Some of them may look familiar. Michelle actually started as an intern within the laboratory. The two other interns on the right, they have gone on to careers at the Oregon State Police Department and the Orange County Crime Lab. Some of these other ladies also look familiar because they are also interns. The three of our DNA analysts started out as interns within the laboratory. We work closely with Cal State LA's criminalistics program, where we have, I've supervised master's thesis within the DNA unit. We have a total of three interns who have gone on to receive their masters and we have a fourth in the lab right now. This is the current batch of summer interns. David on the left is actually the first male to participate. Just happens to be that way. There is a lot of interest by women with a role in forensics. And so the internship program exposes them to crime scenes, to fingerprint processing, evidence processing. And those who are interested in biology can go on to see what DNA testing really looks like. I just want to thank my very, very hard-working staff in the forensic biology unit, the computer forensics unit, and our forensic services unit. And I would also like to extend my gratitude to the Glendale Police Department's Chief and Command Staff for their continued support. It's been, it's been an adventure starting a lab from scratch. We developed all the initial testing protocols that are still in place today. And I've come a long way from a DNA specialist to now the supervisor. So it wouldn't be possible without the support of the Glendale Police Department, the City of Glendale itself, and the City Council. That's it.
Thank you so very much.
You have any questions?
Certainly. Commissioners?
Thank you for enlightening us with the important work that you do. I just have a quick question. As I recall you stating that you had 2,300 cases over the last several years. Of those cases, how many of them were, were you able to actually catch the bad guy with?
So our average ability to obtain a DNA profile off a case is probably about 50%. And then from that portion, we have about a 40% hit rate in CODIS.
Yes, ma'am.
Hello, I found what, the information you presented to be very interesting. And my question is regarding your high school outreach. I go to Hoover High School. And I know many students at my school would appreciate if one, someone from your lab would come talk to us about your job and the impact it has on the community.
Absolutely. I think this past year, actually, our forensic services supervisor, who's sitting out in the audience, and a forensic specialist actually came and spoke at Hoover High. But we'd love to, again, make it a yearly. I think it's really important to engage youth, not just as a potential career choice, but also the background check is rigorous. And we find a lot of people, in this day and age, aren't able to pass background checks based on some decisions that they make in high school or college. And they really, if you're considering any sort of career in law enforcement, that should be a consideration, consequences.
Any other Commissioners?
I would like to ask a question. Hi, I'm very interested in your outreach or your work with younger girls. I actually mentor Girl Scout robotics teams, which also have a very big push for women in STEM. So what exactly do those programs look like for girls? Because obviously, forensic is a very complex field.
So right now, it's not an extended program, but I think there is a forensics patch they may receive. And so they come and have hands-on experience, whether putting down latent prints and lifting latent prints, processing prints, processing, processing using Blue Star, a chemical, to see blood, it might fluoresce. And then also, they're given a tour of the lab. And there are actually workstations that they come and rotate around. So they get more hands-on experience.
Why don't you bring your friend up?
Oh, he's dressed so snazly, too. Let me introduce you to Forensic Services Supervisor, A.C. Brogdon.
Good evening, ladies, how are you?
Fine, thank you, welcome.
A.C. Brogdon with the Glendale Police Department Forensic Services Section Supervisor. Thank you for having us here tonight. Like my colleague and my future boss just said, we like to reach out to all, especially women, little girls, to all ages, from middle school to colleges, just a way which we can inspire them to come into the DNA section, the forensic services section. And we're going to grow in this capacity as best as possible.
2,300 cases, is there a backlog? Is there a backlog? I mean, how quickly can you get through those?
So there is typically a, there is a backlog. There is, our violent crimes are addressed quickly. The delay is not in the DNA testing itself necessarily, but in the completion of the report writing. It's always the paperwork that takes a long time. So there is a backlog. But we hope to be able to expand our staff to address some of those and then also work on our turnaround time to provide even more immediate services to the City of Glendale.
Quick question. I had a question about the internship program. Is there an application process?
So it's in, we do have an application process. People can reach out to the City of Glendale's website and I think they can find an email address to express their interest. Typically, with a background check, say a student is interested, there's a minimum number of hours and they should really be applying three to four months in advance. We bring them in for an in-person interview. And then the number of students we take depends on our own capacity too, where we are in, how many interns we have carried over from the previous year, et cetera.
Thank you.
I have a question, another question. Are there, aside from a science degree or a master's, are there any other qualifications, certifications, licensure that are sought for testing?
Yes, so while a degree in natural science or something similar is required for a DNA analyst and certain coursework, A.C. can speak to the educational requirements for a crime scene investigator.
Typically, for the Forensic Services Section Crime Scene Investigators, they can range from a hard science such as biology, chemistry, and then also can be criminal justice majors as well. Myself, I have an anthropology major, similar to what you would see on the television show Bones, which they look at in anthropology. But what we take is somebody with criminal justice, some type of bachelor degree. And then from then, they have an internship program. They're part of memberships within the forensic community. And then a part of our program is we train them for one to two years in the capacity of a crime scene investigator.
There are certifications, but that's typically after you've obtained a number of years of experience and you can take a test for certification, whether it's in criminalistics or in identification, crime scene processing.
I don't mean to keep you too long.
No, anytime.
Tell us about last year's case.
Oh, so we recently.
Both your cases?
Yes. So in August 8th, 2017, Haisun O was found shot in her Montrose home. You may remember that is shocking to the community. It turned out it was a follow-home robbery, really a whodunit. And it's rare for the City of Glendale to ever get a crime like that. We actually did debriefs for our patrol this, this past year. So A.C. performed, he did the crime scene processing.
Yes, so we responded that night to the individual that was deceived. And then we processed it, as far as what you would see on the television show, Crime Scene Investigators, took photographs, videography. And collectively, the unique thing about working at the City of Glendale is we're able to work with detectives, the DNA section, the computer forensic section, and then also the crime scene investigation section collectively to bring closure to this case.
There is actually a very limited amount of evidence. There was a spent cartridge case, blood from the victim herself. She was shot in the heart and other miscellaneous items around. When a crime like this happens, everyone comes, comes together within the City of Glendale, like A.C. said. And so while the investigators are continuing, they're questioning A.C.'s processing evidence, I've already started my DNA testing. So they were, investigators were able to find the victim's cellphone on a flight path in the middle of the night. So when I came in the next morning, I started DNA testing on the spent cartridge case and on the cellphone. And then a citizen, a Caltrans worker, actually found the victim's purse further along on the freeway. So that brought another round of DNA testing. Within 48 hours, all the DNA testing was completed. And unfortunately, there didn't seem to be anything that could help investigators. There weren't any fingerprints. And we also have a fantastic crime analyst who came up short when it came to identifying the vehicle. But about a week after the murder, I was taking another look at the DNA, the DNA that was obtained from the purse and felt that we could pull out a foreign individual outside of the victim from it. And that day, we requested an expedited search of the database and we got a hit and got a name. So that was the first all-lead our detectives had. A week in time feels fast, but for a murder investigation, it feels like forever. And the next day, our crime analyst was able to identify the car and the driver, whereas the CODIS hit came from, is the shooter. It went to trial, actually, starting this past July. And we both testified. And a year from that CODIS hit, we received the verdict. Both individuals were found guilty. And sentencing just happened yesterday, actually, for the shooter. So it's, that's fast for, for homicide. And we're happy to bring, that we were able to bring closure to family on such a tragic case. But that's the type of work we're able to do here at the City of Glendale. Very proud of it. Extraordinary work by the investigating officer group as well.
Thank you.
Incredible.
Yes, thank you very much for coming.
I have one more question. Aside from DNA testing, the laboratory, what else can, do you test? Toxicology or?
So we don't have a toxicology or drug unit right now. We have lane print processing and comparisons. We do crime scene investigations. Spent casings can be entered into NIBIN, which is the National Integrated Ballistics Information Network, to see if we can match multiple shootings. And then our, we have a computer forensics unit as well.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for coming.
Thank you so much, we really appreciate it.
Appreciate that.
Next item on the agenda, please.
Item 3, Oral Comment. Discussion is limited to items not a part of this agenda. Each speaker is allowed five minutes. The Commission may question or respond to the speaker, but there will be no debate or discussion. Staff may refer the matter to the proper department for investigation and report.
It appears we have no speakers.
Item 4, Consent Items. Item 4A, Approval of the Minutes of the Regular Commission Meeting Held on May 14, 2018.
Chair Burns, you can entertain a motion from either Commissioner Perian or Vice Chair Magrin. Commissioner Brusalian will abstain since she was not present at the last meeting, since she was not a Commissioner.
Could I have a motion, please, Vice Chair Magrin?
Yes.
You're moving that we accept the minutes?
Yes. I'll second.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Burns?
Yes.
Commissioner Magrin?
Yes.
Commissioner Perian?
Yes.
Commissioner Subirian? And Commissioner Brusalian will abstain.
And Commissioner Brusalian will put down on the record as abstaining. Thank you. Chair Burns, before we move on to the first business agenda item under action items, I'd like to ask your permission to skip forward to Section 2, Reports Information Only, and discuss the update regarding the Glendale Fire Department's Girls' Fire Camp since Chief Fish is in the audience and has another engagement after this meeting. Thank you. Okay, so I'll give you just a brief update on what we've been up to since the last commission meeting of the CSW. You had approved a partnership with the Glendale Fire Department for the first-ever Girls' Fire Camp in Glendale. And since then, staff has been working with the chief, who is here today to answer any questions you may have on planning this event. The date of the camp will be Saturday, October 27 of this year, from 10:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. It'll be held at the Glendale Fire Department's Training Center over on West Chevy Chase Street. The camp will be open to all genders, ages 14 to 18, though the main purpose of this camp is to promote fire service and provide mentorships to girls in an effort to have more female firefighters. Because we are a government organization, this must be open to everyone who is interested in it. 20 participants will be allowed to join this one-day program on a first-come, first-served basis through preregistration, which will open closer to the date of the event. And participants will have the opportunity to experience what a career as a firefighter with the Glendale Fire Department entails. The female firefighters will be there and they'll be able to provide mentorship and anyone who's interested in maintaining that connection with the firefighters and learning about the things they need to do, similar to what Catherine was talking about with background checks. And I think the Fire Department will stress the importance of, you know, making good decisions so that they can pass background checks should they want to go into fire service. And the Fire Foundation, I believe, will be providing lunch and T-shirts to the participants. And Commission will be invited in the morning to give some opening remarks and those will all be worked out with you. And that concludes the report. If you have any questions, the chief is here.
Welcome, Chief Fish. Would you like to?
Madam Chair, Members of the Commission, thank you for having me.
You're welcome. Would you like to talk a little bit about this, this plan that you have? As I read it, I got concerned about the fact that it appeared that girls were going to be the focus. And then I saw the word gender and I realized that that word needed to be in this.
That's correct. We don't want to be.
Why don't you tell me why?
We don't want to be exclusive because, to be honest with you, in San Diego, there was a bit of a snafu when they, when they were exclusive of all, only inclusive of females. So now we're making it open to all genders. So basically, this, this Girls' Fire Camp is, is basically a method to grow your own females on the department. If you don't know, it is extremely difficult to get through a recruit academy and through the training process and through probation and through paramedic school. So it takes focus early on. You got to get through a very difficult background. Our backgrounds are very thorough because we have to trust people going into homes. So we want to make sure that we influence these young ladies and, so that they have the opportunity to succeed should they decide that being a firefighter is something that might be in their future. So what we will do is we will provide them with all the information, how to stay out of trouble, first and foremost. Second, how to get into different classes at the local community college, what classes you can take in high school. And all the, all the tricks that we use to get people through the process. It's not tricks per se, it's more methods. How to take an oral interview, how to have command presence when you walk in the room and be able to speak very confidently to the oral board that's going to eventually give you a job. How to get yourself physically fit. Because they're going to have an opportunity to put the turnout jacket on, our big jackets and our breathing apparatus, which weigh a lot. They're going to have an opportunity to flow the fire hose, which has got a lot of nozzle pressure, moving people around pretty easy. So these are all things that require a lot of strength. And we, we have no problem showing our young ladies in the community about how that works. And I believe that through this, we're going to see some fruit down the road. We're going to see these young girls go into the, the process of becoming a firefighter in their mind already. That's the, that's the cool part. And then as, on the backside, we're going to see the, the harvest. And then on the backside, we're going to see the harvest of some female firefighters, I would say, probably within maybe three or four years.
But girls aren't necessarily as strong as young men.
I don't know if I would say that. Not necessarily. I'm not an attorney, I can't really judge that, but I can say this. The two female firefighters that we have currently...
Where are they? Did you bring them?
No, I didn't. Don't worry, you'll see them on the 27th of October, though.
Good.
Leslie Scott and Sarah Craig are extremely capable physically, and they're extremely capable in every other way as firefighters. So as a matter of fact, Leslie Scott was part of a crew that saved a baby the other day. She was on the news and was honored. So that was quite a nice thing for the Glendale Fire Department.
Was that the baby that was...
Half-born by the time we got on scene, yes. And she just acted so cool, calm, collected, just made the right decisions. And the baby was saved, and the family's doing really good now, and the baby's doing really good. Baby Daniel is breathing air, doing great, fantastic now. So a lot of that was due to her very easygoing nature. She's not flapped by any problems on the scene. She knows where she's at, she takes care of business, she made good decisions. And because of that, that baby is alive today, so.
It was very interesting, when it was being reported on television, I didn't realize it was a female firefighter. It was so well-done that it could have been either male or female.
Yes.
It was just presented as fire, I guess fire meant...
Firefighter.
Firefighter. Very impressive, congratulated.
We'll do that.
Thank you very much. We'll see you October 27 at 10:00 a.m.
Excellent.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
At this time, we can return to our regular business agenda. A, action items. Item one is selection of commission officers. Sorry, Horek. A is motion to select chair for the term of August 2018 to August 2019. And B is a motion to select vice chair for the term of August 2018 to August 2019. Chair Burns, may I provide the commission with the process for this, please?
I was just going to ask you to do that.
Thank you. So the terms of the current chair and vice chair end this month, and so this item is before you to select a new chair and vice chair for a one-year term through August 2019. The chair may open the floor to nominations for the position of chair and receive nominations from commissioners. Once all nominations are received, the chair will close the floor to nominations. Please note, there is no second required for nominations. Once the chair is selected, I'm sorry, in order to be selected chair, a minimum of three affirmative votes is required. Once the chair is selected, the process may be repeated for selection of vice chair. Prior to voting, should the commission wish to hear statements from each nominee, there would need to be a motion and a second for this to occur. And then the new officers can take their new seats once the selections are complete, and we can move on with the meeting. Are there any questions about the process?
Any questions? Are there any nominations for the chair?
I would like to nominate, once again, Linda Burns to be the chair of this commission. I think it would be an honor for you to serve one more term, Linda.
Thank you.
I would like to nominate myself for chair.
Any other nominations?
The nominations are closed, then, if there are no more?
No, no, no. I'm new.
So at this time, I will read the commissioner names, and the commissioners can vote by indicating who they're going to vote for. Is this correct, Lucy? Okay. And then if we get to three for one member, we'll get to three. If not, we can keep going.
Redo it.
Yes, okay. So Commissioner Brusalian?
Do I say the name?
Yes, please.
Linda Burns?
Burns?
Linda Burns.
Magren?
Linda Burns.
Perian?
Arminé Perian.
All right, thank you. We have the selection of our chair. Congratulations, Chair Burns.
Thank you.
And for vice chair, we'll open nominations at this time.
I will nominate Eileen Magren.
Any other nominations? All right, so that closes the nominations for vice chair. So for vice chair Magren, we can just go through roll call with a yes or a no. Commissioner Brusalian?
Yes.
Burns?
Yes.
Magren?
Yes.
Perian?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. So there's no reshuffling of seats. We can move on to the next item.
Next item on the agenda, please.
Item two, selection of delegate and alternate commission representatives for the Association of California Commissions for Women for the term of August 2018 to August 2019. Two A, motion to select a commission delegate for ACCW.
Would you please provide a report on this item, Ms. Powers?
Certainly. So the Commission on the Status of Women here in Glendale has been a member of the Association of California Commissions for Women, also known as ACCW, for over fourteen years. This is an association that allows city and county CSWs, along with the California State Commission on the Status of Women and Girls, to get together to share ideas, collaborate with each other, network, and discuss pressing women issues to promote the viability, strength, and effectiveness of member commissions throughout the state of California. They hold four quarterly meetings per year and ask that each member commission select a delegate and alternate to vote on behalf of their commission during these quarterly meetings. From these four meetings, two of them are teleconferences, so members phone in, and two of them are held onsite, and they will alternate between Northern California and Southern California. Every year, every other year, depends on the year, there's also an annual conference. They try to combine the conference with one of their quarterly meetings. And they try to hold these meetings on Saturdays. They limit them to one day as to prevent the need for overnight accommodations for commissioners. So, you know, if it's up north, you can fly in and fly out the same day if you choose to, or drive to the meeting if it's down here in Southern California. They do provide limited travel stipends from time to time if their budget allows to, one representative from each commission for any costs that they may bear in traveling to the meeting. And as representatives of the commission, the delegate will cast the vote of the Glendale CSW by voting according to the commission's articulated position whenever possible, and just knowing that they represent the commission, the city council, and the City of Glendale. And representatives who attend ACCW meetings may be asked to provide an oral report to the commission at a following meeting. Those we usually place on the agenda and just ask the commissioner to share some feedback. That concludes my report. At this time, we can take, there's two motions. One is to select a commission delegate, and the other is to select a commission alternate. They can be made in one motion, or we can take them separately. That concludes the report. Thank you.
You can pass the gavel and make the motion.
At this time, commissioners are welcome to express interest in serving. Thank you.
A representation of the commission? Is there anyone interested in serving as a delegate or an alternate?
Do we have a date?
There are no dates, unfortunately. They get set in the future. But as mentioned, the onsite meetings tend to be on Saturdays. Can't quite remember the, I'm having a hard time recalling, the teleconference meetings, whether those are, I don't believe those are necessarily on the weekends, but I know they make a point of having their in-person meetings, usually over the weekend, so that people can attend.
Is Eda Kedorian has been both a delegate and an alternate? And I believe you have also, have you not?
I've been an alternate.
An alternate. I think I've operated as a delegate and an alternate. Do you have any interest in...
I'll volunteer as an alternate for now, since I'm fresh.
And what about a delegate for the ACCW?
I'll delegate.
Okay.
Thank you.
And if I can't, then somebody will say.
Yes, of course.
Okay.
So may I please have a motion that reflects Vice Chair Magren as the ACCW delegate and Commissioner Brusalian as the alternate, please?
Do I have to move?
Someone can make the motion.
I can make a motion. Go ahead, please make the motion.
I make the motion to approve.
All right.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Brusalian?
Yes.
Commissioner Burns?
Yes.
Commissioner Magren?
Yes.
Commissioner Perian?
Yes.
Thank you.
Item three, appointment of selection committee for the 2018-19 Student Ex officio members. Item three A, motion appointing two commissioners and one student ex officio to the selection committee.
May I just make a comment that this is really an interesting, wonderful job to do? And I believe that, I'm trying to remember who was on this nominating committee last year. Were you not?
I was.
And who else?
Commissioner Samarjan, I believe.
Yes. And I have been a couple of times. Would you, this is a really interesting thing. You might enjoy this one, Commissioner. Yes?
Yes.
Okay. I need a second delegate to choose the students?
I don't mind, I'll be part of it. I've done it once, it's really...
It really is. It's very, very much, it's fun to meet the young people that are interested in being on this commission. We need a motion?
Part of the staff report also welcomes if the students, although they don't have the voting power and, you know, in making decisions, it's nice to have a student ex officio commissioner. It doesn't violate the Brown Act at all, since you're not voting members of the commission. If either of you are interested in being part of the interview process, some of the feedback that you provide is kind of on a peer level. It does serve value to the commissioners when they're going through the process. The interviews are held during the week, on an afternoon after school. They go into the early evening, it's usually a couple, three, sometimes three hours. And so if either of you are interested in that...
I would be interested in being part of the selection committee.
Thank you. And you're available during that period of time?
Yes.
That's terrific.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Do we need a motion now?
Yes, please. A motion that reflects Commissioner Brusalian and Vice Chair Magren and ex officio Alfred as the members of the selection committee for the 2018-19 Student Ex officio Members Selection Committee.
I will so move. I will move.
Pass the gavel. Typically, pass the gavel to do so, sorry.
I will move. It's okay, I just passed and moved. Roll call, please.
Second?
Oh, second, please.
Second?
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Brusalian?
Yes.
Commissioner Burns?
Yes.
Commissioner Magren?
Yes.
Commissioner Perian?
Yes.
Item four, Domestic Violence Awareness Month activities. Item four A, motion approving request to the Glendale City Council for proclamation of October as Domestic Violence Awareness Month.
Would you please provide a report on this, Ms. Powers?
Certainly. Chair Burns, members of the commission, over the years, the Glendale Commission on the Status of Women has organized Domestic Violence Awareness Month, also known as DVAM, activities to raise awareness of domestic violence and to help prevent and eliminate violence within the City of Glendale. This year, there are two activities for consideration by the commission. One is the annual proclamation for Domestic Violence Awareness Month in Glendale. So should the commission choose to, you could request from council to have the month of October proclaimed as Domestic Violence Awareness Month. And the mayor and city council would make such a proclamation at a city council meeting that members of the commission would receive. There is the ability to put this on the agenda for the Tuesday, October 2 meeting of city council at 6:00 p.m. And as mentioned, the chair traditionally accepts this proclamation on behalf of the commission, and any commissioners that are available to be present, including our students, are welcome to attend. The next item for your consideration as part of Domestic Violence Awareness Month activities is a community forum. And the Glendale YWCA, who's our partner in the annual event that the commission does, the Candlelight Vigil, has expressed interest in partnering for a slightly different event this year, which is a community forum and Candlelight Vigil. The YWCA earlier this year, as you recall, released a domestic violence survey to the community. And that survey has been concluded, and the results have been gathered. And the YWCA would like to use this opportunity to present the results of this survey, as well as have a panel of experts who can speak on domestic violence to answer questions. These would be law enforcement, healthcare, educational, and religious leaders who would lead a public discussion. And Assembly Member Laura Friedman has expressed interest in moderating this panel. And then the forum would be followed by a candle lighting ceremony to remember those who have lost their lives to domestic violence and to honor those survivors. And the YWCA is interested in holding this event the evening of Thursday, October 11, at downtown Central Library. The event would start at 6:00 p.m. with a reception program at 6:30 and would conclude by 8:00. Any refreshments would be provided by the Glendale YWCA. In partnering with the YWCA, this would allow for their use of the city facility, the library, at no cost to them. And the city would also help with graphics, designing of the program, and flyer and promotional materials. There would be no hard costs for the commission for this. All of that can be absorbed administratively. And that concludes the report. We have Sylvia Chin, the Associate Director of the Glendale YWCA, here to help answer any questions you might have or fill in any blanks that I may have left out. And that concludes the report. If you have any questions, thank you.
Thank you. This item is open for discussion, commissioners? I don't have any discussion. Any comments?
What was the Candlelight Vigil like last year? And why are they making it a forum slash vigil this year? What made them change it?
Thank you for having me here, first of all. The difference is that we put together and administered this survey for the first time. And granted, I am new-ish to YWCA Glendale. It's about eleven months now that I've been there. But we really wanted to measure the attitudes and beliefs around domestic violence in Glendale and surrounding communities. So when we launched this, I believe it was back in the spring, we reached out to our partners in those various areas, law enforcement, healthcare, et cetera, and were able to get back about seventy to eighty responses. And so we really want to start, use it as a way to start a conversation with the community around domestic violence. But we also wanted to honor the tradition that's been the Candlelight Vigil year after year.
Yes, that's fine.
Thank you.
Just one second, please. See you later. This item is still open for discussion? May we have a motion on this item, then? I would, am I able to make a motion? I would make a motion approving the partnership with the YWCA of Glendale for the Domestic Violence Community Forum. May I have a second, please?
A second?
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Brusalian?
Yes.
Commissioner Burns?
Yes.
Commissioner Magren? Commissioner Perian?
Yes.
And we just want the record to show that Commissioner Magren had to leave, so she's no longer with us at the meeting.
Thank you.
Chair Burns, may we also have a motion for the proclamation, too, please?
May I, let's see. The motion is approving request for the Glendale City Council for the proclamation of October as Domestic Violence... for the proclamation of October as Domestic Violence Awareness Month, which would be for A. May I have a second?
A second?
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Brusalian?
Yes.
Commissioner Burns?
Yes.
Commissioner Perian?
Yes.
Thank you.
The next item on the agenda, please.
Item five, Consideration of Partnership with the YWCA of Glendale to Host a Woman's Empowerment Brunch. Item five A, Motion Approving Partnership with the YWCA of Glendale.
So Chair Burns, members of the commission, the Glendale YWCA has expressed interest in partnering with the commission to host its second Empower Her Brunch, currently scheduled for Thursday, November 15th, from 9:00 AM to noon. The CSW had partnered with the YWCA last year to put on this event. The event was held in January of this year, and they'd like to hold it in November this year. And this is a fundraiser for the YWCA and the services they provide. The event would feature a hot brunch menu, a keynote speaker, local panelists, giveaways, and networking opportunities. The theme of this brunch would be women of influence. And there would be inspiring and entrepreneurial women speaking on topics such as becoming a person of influence, developing leadership potential, developing a personal brand, and more. They are interested in holding this event. Last year, it was held at, earlier this year, it was held at Brand Library's Recital Hall. And this year, in hopes to have a larger audience, they'd like to hold it at Downtown Central Library, and the facility would be more amenable for them. Partnership with the commission would allow, again, for an in-kind donation of use of a city facility. And the YWCA also does have scholarships and student tickets so that women who may not necessarily be able to afford to purchase tickets have the opportunity to come and learn from this event, too. If there's any questions, be happy to.
This item is open for discussion? Commissioners? Wish to discuss it at all?
No.
Then I'm going to make a motion to approve the partnership with the YWCA for the Empowering Brunch. Have a second on that, please.
I'll second.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Brusalian?
Yes.
Commissioner Burns?
Yes.
Commissioner Perian?
Yes.
Next item on the agenda, please.
Item six, Draft of 2019 to 2022 Strategic Plan for the Commission on the Status of Women. Item six A, Motion Providing Direction Regarding Plan Is Presented.
Chair Burns, members of the commission, the CSW's current strategic plan, which covers the period from 2015 to 18, is set to expire at the end of the year. And as such, there was a Strategic Development Ad Hoc Committee comprised of Vice Chair Magron and Commissioner Perian, who began meeting earlier this year to review the current strategic plan and identify future strategic aims and goals. So the draft strategic plan before you covers a four-year period. It is similar to the 2015-18 strategic plan. It has been retooled and realigned. It is before you there. I'd be happy to go through the various strategic aims, if you'd like. Chair Burns?
That would be fine, thank you. Let's do that.
So Strategic Aim One, Evaluate and Assess. The goals of this strategic aim would be to assess the issues and needs confronting all women and girls in Glendale, evaluate and identify gaps in existing services and resources in the community on an ongoing basis, and recommend and support programs that further the goals and the mission of the commission. So this is similar to the work that the commission's been doing thus far. Having the strategic plan go to 2022, the hopes would be that the census data would start to get pooled together, and the commission could, at least by 2021, 22, probably more like 2022, begin working with Mount St. Mary's again, quite possibly, to issue another report on the status of women and girls in Glendale. And, you know, compare that to the one that was done 2015-16, since there will be new census data to work off of. Strategic Aim Two, Policy Development, Advocacy, and Advising. This really hasn't changed from the last strategic plan, because this is just one of the fundamental things that the commission does, and this is recommending to city council policies relevant to the status and well-being of women and girls in Glendale, and advising city council on issues. And that really primarily comes through the legislative platform that the commission has adopted, and the position on particular bills that the commission takes positions on and makes recommendations to council as well. Strategic Aim Three, Communication and Education. The goals of this strategic aim are to increase the level of knowledge in the community regarding women's and girls' issues and the well-being of women in the community, to maximize awareness of services and resources available for both women and girls, and to work with city agencies to publicize the commission's work as it relates to the status and well-being of women and girls in Glendale. And Strategic Aim Four, Community Partnerships and Outreach. The goals of this strategic aim are to review existing partnerships and identify potential new partnerships to further the goals and mission of the commission, to build alliances and liaise with other organizations to further the goals and mission of the commission, and to maintain visibility within the community to promote the well-being of women and girls and to raise the profile of the commission's work. So the draft of the strategic plan, there's a little write-up that goes along with each strategic plan. It's included in Exhibit One of this report. The final product won't look like this. It will go through graphics and have a more professional and polished look to it. This is just a rough. And staff is happy to take feedback here at this time from the commission, take feedback via email over the course of the next month or so. Or we can approve it here tonight if the commission feels that this is the final version that should go through. A final version of the strategic plan would be nice to have it finalized by the October meeting by this commission. A November meeting, I'm so sorry, thank you. November meeting of this commission for approval and recommendation to city council for adoption. And that concludes the report.
This item is open for discussion now, Commissioner?
If I'm not mistaken in reading both, I see that the only difference, well, correct me if I'm wrong, is you've elaborated on each strategic aim, explaining more in depth of what the goals and issues are.
Yes, Commissioner Brusalian, that is definitely the case. There was also some things that were switched around to make more sense. And there was at least one thing that was changed from the last one that just wasn't something that was, over the course of the last three years, the commission didn't feel was part of the goals and a direction that the commission wanted to go in. So that was removed from the strategic plan.
Thank you.
And also.
Yes, Commissioner?
There was some overlap amongst a couple of the aims with the community outreach and education. There was a degree of overlap that kind of left the ad hoc committees, you know, required some clarification. So that was, you know, crystallized here with this plan. I do want to thank Christine Powers for working with me on developing this. We did have two very intense sessions here and another one offsite with Commissioner Magron, Vice Chair Magron. And it was quite a pleasure working with you. And I'm very proud of this. Thank you.
Thank you. And one of the goals from the strategic plan, I believe, in discussions with Commissioner Perian, that would be nice to present to the commission, would be, based on the strategic plan that the commission adopts, whatever final iteration it is, to bring an annual work plan to the commission, based on commissioners' interest and feedback. That would help the commission see, these are the different things we're going to work on this year. This is how we're going to meet the needs, meet the goals of the different strategic aims. And kind of mapping out the year, which is not something we've done for the last couple of years. I think that would be a nice thing. Still, things can come up as they come up, whether it's opportunities from various organizations, and we can take them as they come. But for the most part, I believe the commission knows the various things that they engage in over the course of the year. And it would be nice to be able to do work plans off of the strategic plan on an annual basis. And that can be worked out at the February meeting. Any other questions?
Terrific idea. I think basically because at least two of us have not seen this agenda or this, anything about this until yesterday or the day before, I think it would be a good idea for all of the commissioners to take this home and consider it, rather than verifying it or validating it right now. It's a tremendous amount of work, and it's a beautifully done piece. So I say congratulations, you did a great job. And, but I think that the idea of us going over it at home and offering any suggestions to you within the next, well, month or three weeks, so that it could be ready for the 8th, I believe it's the 8th or the 7th of November.
Yes, based on that feedback, staff is happy to take, and we would initiate an email to you to send your individual comments to staff. And staff could work to incorporate those into the strategic plan and bring a final draft for your consideration at the November 8th meeting.
Let me see if I had anything else I wanted to talk about. No, I think, I think just basically, as I read over it, it seemed that I'd like more time to digest this and then offer suggestions, or for that matter, say this is a terrific idea, let's leave it and keep it. But I think we need a little bit more time, rather than the time that we've had so far.
That's fine, thank you. So at this time, we won't need a motion, and we can just move on.
Oh, there isn't a motion?
Unless there's any other feedback from commissioners at this time.
I don't have any right now. Do you have any? Because that's your baby, right? No, okay, so we do not need anything else?
No, thank you.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda, please.
Next item is Item B, Reports, Information Only. We've already highlighted Item One. We're going to go to Item Two, Final Camp Rosie Update.
Chair Burns, members of the commission, I will give you an update on Camp Rosie and just remind you that Sylvia is in the audience, and she can help us answer any questions that come up or fill in any gaps about Camp Rosie. So as you know, last year, the commission agreed to transfer Camp Rosie to the YWCA Glendale, along with 5,000 seed money for its implementation in summer 2018. And as such, the YWCA came through and provided Camp Rosie this past summer. They provided two, two-week sessions, and they were repetitive. So they had a new set of girls in each session. They had the capacity for 20 girls per session, so to serve 40 girls total. And they were able to serve 33 campers, who ranged in age from 11 to 15. Of the 33 campers, 14 lived in the Glendale area, 10 lived in Pasadena, one in Burbank, and eight were outside of this tri-city region in Los Angeles and surrounding communities. Camp Rosie does serve for the YWCA as their primary prevention initiative. And primary prevention approaches attempt to combat knowledge, attitudes, beliefs, and behaviors associated with risk factors of teen dating violence, as well as aim to promote knowledge, attitude, beliefs, and behaviors that support protective factors of healthy relationships. Risk factors for teen dating violence include low self-esteem, having few friends, or a small support system, emotional dependence and insecurity, lack of emotions management, belief in strict gender roles, and lack of connection to their community. So Camp Rosie was able to address these risk factors through various activities that are outlined in your report. And some of those include connecting with community members and leaders, working in different professions of interest. They had workshops that explored healthy relationship building and bystander intervention, so what friends could do to help their friends experiencing dating violence. Exploration of stress management, self-love and having healthy conflict, and discussion of available resources for survivors of violence. And the age range does seem low for dating violence, but the point of this is to address and help girls instill what healthy relationships look like before they start dating, so that once they do start dating, they have that understanding and are more likely to make better decisions and choose partners that are, will be able to engage in healthy relationships with them. So they did ask the campers different questions. They did pre-tests, post-tests. And five of the 33 campers did identify as having been in or currently in a dating relationship. And interestingly, and unfortunately, of the campers who did experience dating, all of them said that they had experienced some form of unhealthy relationship or dating violence. So YWCA staff is currently in the beginning stages of their data analysis, and will have some more specific data on types of violence and frequency by mid-September. And so should the commission be interested in that information, staff can definitely pass it along to you. So some of the activities that the participants engaged in was yoga. They participated in Junior Achievements, It's My Business Young Entrepreneurship Curriculum, so that they got a good basis for financial literacy, self-defense training, even things like bike making, magazine making, their Healthy Relationship Curriculum. As Catherine mentioned, they toured the forensic lab and the Glendale Police Department. They got to come to City Hall and meet with elected officials and staff. Commissioner Perian went and spoke as a guest speaker there. They went on a trip to the California Science Center, a service trip to LA Kitchen. They went to Griffith Park, they went to universities. They participated in comedy sketch writing. They did a service project for the YWCA's Glendale Children's Program. They were very, very busy. And one of the more exciting field trips that they took was they went to the Maker Space at Downtown Glendale Central Library and got a chance to work with the librarians and explore all the amazing things that our Downtown Central Library offers. They had 3D printers and the sewing machines and all the different things that are available to them here in this community. And so with regard to measuring outcomes, the YWCA Glendale staff administered pre- and post-tests for their Safe Dates curriculum that measured the camper's knowledge of types of dating abuse, red flags of unhealthy relationships, how to help a friend, and different things. And they're still in the process of analyzing this data, but their initial analysis revealed that by the end of camp, campers demonstrated an increased knowledge of what dating violence can look like, both emotionally and physically, what warning signs exist, how to manage their own emotions and stress. And they were, most significantly, they were able to identify safe and concrete ways to help a friend experiencing violence. With Camp Rosie 2018 being such a success, YWCA Glendale hopes to raise funds to offer an additional session, so they want to have three two-week sessions of Camp Rosie, and they want to go on more field trips and experience more hands-on trade activities and bring in more female leaders to speak and host workshops. And they will begin strategic planning in the next coming months. And that concludes the report. If there's any questions, I'll invite Sylvia up again, if there are any questions for her, too. Thank you.
I'd like to add that I thoroughly enjoyed having the opportunity to speak to these girls on two occasions because of the program, two-week, two-week program. I shared my experiences and my perspective on leadership skills and how to navigate through corporate American organizations to help them, you know, advance in their careers. So it was quite enjoyable, and I thank the opportunity.
I have a few questions. Where is the Camp Rosie advertised for these girls to be able to participate?
We relaunched Camp Rosie for the first time this past summer. Just a little background, I'm sure most of you know this, but Camp Rosie was with the city of Glendale for many years, I think for about eight years. And there was great will by the community to bring this back. And we were honored at YWCA to be asked to take it on, and so we did. So a little bit of difference hearing from YWCA talk about Camp Rosie when it was time to market the program. But we put it out again to our community partners, and also through our own marketing, social media, e-blasts, all the typical vehicles. But I think the exciting thing about doing this next year is that now people have heard about Camp Rosie and have heard, you know, YWCA in conjunction with Camp Rosie. And so we think we'll reach a larger group of potential girls who want to be a part of it next year. And also, we got coverage in the press, I think, four times in just the last few months. So there's so much interest, and I think it'll only grow in future years.
Do, are the, are the parents the ones that bring them to enroll? And I, I know this might sound stupid, but do the campers know what their, what the camp is about before they get there? Or is it, or do they think it's just a fun camp? Like a summer camp?
They had an idea that it was a little bit extraordinary. It was a little bit more than just a summer camp with, you know, creative activities because we talked about this as specifically a girls empowerment camp. And so yes, parents are the ones who enroll their child, but the way we put it out there was, the way we messaged the camp was, you know, if your daughter is interested in XYZ and it was really about girls getting exposed to not only careers but interests that traditionally haven't been accessible to them. And so what we saw was really engaged campers opened their eyes to careers and experiences that hadn't ever been brought to them before. And you'll see in your report a few quotes from parents and, and the campers.
The reason I'm asking this is because I see that a lot of the campers are very young. I, I wouldn't let, if I had a daughter, I wouldn't let them date at age 11, 12, or 13. So that's why I asked that question. And how many of those participants had, do you have a, do you have a ratio of the ones that had dating violence versus unhealthy relationships, maybe in the home or outside the home, or?
I think that's gonna be a part of the analysis that we're currently working on. And just to speak to the age range, this program really is for middle-school aged girls. But that goes back to this idea of domestic violence prevention and that to start having these conversations about what healthy relationships look like, what you can expect, you know, sense of autonomy about your own body, et cetera, those sorts of issues, to, to start those with age-appropriate conversations at, at a fairly early age. And, and yes, as Christine said, it's sort of surprising to see that five of the girls have, are in or have been dating and, and that all of them had experienced some form of.
Right.
Yeah.
And, and this is a day camp, correct?
Correct.
And I see, okay, that now, only 14 of them lived in Glendale and the others, well, Pasadena and Burbank are our sister cities. LA, Valencia, Pacoima, Monobello, how was, how did they get wind of this?
I would like to find out as well.
Okay, okay.
And I'll report back to you.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Don't go away yet.
Okay.
I would like to ask you for an income and expense statement for Camp Rosie.
We will happily present that to you.
When?
Christine, when is the next?
November 8th.
Our next meeting is November the 8th, I believe.
If we can do it then, or we can do it next month if you decide?
We don't have a meeting next month, I believe.
The material can be submitted to the Commission in advance of a meeting. We don't need to meet in order to have materials presented to you, but if you'd like to discuss it, once you've reviewed the materials, we can agendize it properly for the November meeting.
I'm sorry, would you try that again? I couldn't quite understand what you were saying. I'm sorry.
Chair, Chair Burns, just that material can be submitted to the commissioners?
Yes.
In advance of a meeting for your review. And if you choose to have it on the agenda for discussion, then we can schedule that appropriately at a later meeting, maybe the November meeting, or it could be at a different meeting of your choosing, could be closer to the time of approval, but you can agendize it at some later time.
So in other words, if we received, each one of us received the income and expense statement for the four weeks of Camp Rosie, we would be able to look at it and then request either it be on the November agenda or not?
Correct.
Or discuss?
If you have no questions, then there would be, there may be no reason to place it on the agenda. But if it, if you'd like to discuss it, then certainly it could be added to the agenda.
Thank you.
Thank you. Chair Burns, and just Commissioner Brusell, and if I can add, in speaking to Tara Peterson, the Executive Director, and Devin, who was the camp director of Camp Rosie, and just a recommendation from the Commission, having, you know, had done Camp Rosie here and organized it through the Commission for many, many years, the recommendation was for them to also promote it through the school district and work with the counselors. And school counselors are pretty good at identifying students that could benefit from a camp like this. So that's another way that we can help increase engagement from the Glendale community and increase those numbers, so that you have more than 50% of the participants coming from Glendale.
Good idea, yeah.
Thank you.
From Glendale, did we have any kind of problem with young gentlemen wishing to come to Camp Rosie?
I didn't hear of any requests from young men this year.
Just wondering because with what's happening today, it's possible that several young gentlemen might be asked to attend this for a specific reason.
Sure, they'd be welcome.
Sure. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item Three, Update on the Commission on the Status of Women's Legislative Agenda.
May we have a report on it?
Yes, yes, Chair Burns, members of the Commission, this report provides the Commission with an update on the various bills that the Commission has already taken a position on in this legislative session. Tomorrow is actually the last day for any bills to be passed out of each House. Any bills that are passed by tomorrow's deadline will then go to the Governor's Desk and he will have until September 30th to sign or veto all bills he receives. From the list of bills supported by the Commission, one has already been passed along and signed by the Governor, so it will go into effect. And that is Assembly Bill 2243. This is Assembly Member Friedman's bill regarding evidence and admissibility. So this will allow victims of extortion, stalking, or a violent felony to block admissibility that they have engaged in an act of prostitution at or around the time they were a victim of the crime. They would still be tried for prostitution and it would be separate, but just it wouldn't be able to come into the court to reduce their credibility, having been a victim of stalking, extortion, or a violent felony. So it wouldn't be used against them in a court of law. Two bills have been held in committee. This is AB 2124, Rubio's Human Trafficking Vertical Prosecution Program Bill, and AB 2340, Friedman's Non-Miner Dependence Victims of Sexual Trafficking Bill. These bills are not likely to be, make, make it out of the legislative session since they've been held, but they may come back in the next session. The four remaining bills in the report have made it to the floor for voting consideration, so there is, there's hope for those four bills. And staff will provide the Commission with an update on the final disposition of all these bills at its next meeting in November. And that concludes the report. If you have any questions.
Any questions, commissioners?
No.
No.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item Six, Commissioner and Staff Comments. I, I have two questions. One, if you could provide a status on GTV six and the soundbites we had talked about?
Sure. They're, they're working on those right now. We decided to finalize a script for all of them and just get all the pieces put together before we started filming them rather than doing them one by one. And also, to throw a wrench in the wheel, the county actually put out some Glendale-specific data on those, some of those markers that we were looking at. And so it, we want to make sure we incorporate those and make sure that we make the information even more Glendale-specific. And so we're hoping that by early, early next year, we should have this all wrapped up. It's a big project and balancing all the other projects that they have to, but it's definitely a work in progress. Want to make sure it's done once and done right. So thank you for your patience on that.
Absolutely, I appreciate the hard work that all of you are putting into it. And I can't wait to see it, but take your time, like you said, make it right.
Thank you.
My other question was if you could provide an update on the fund status for the CSW, the funds?
Sure, I don't have that number off the top of my head, but it isn't very different than the, the number that you had been previously prevent, presented, less than $5,000 to the YWCA. Staff can bring that to you at the November meeting, just as an informational item, so that you have that, the dollars, the exact dollars of that.
And it is still with us, right?
It is, it is part of the city of Glendale, yes.
Great.
Unfortunately, we weren't able to transfer the funds based on the recommendation of the Commission and the City Council and the way we wanted it to be managed. So it's still with the city of Glendale.
That's it, thank you.
Thank you.
Before we go any further, would you like to read and present to ex-officio student? Thank you.
Certainly. This is to Maylin Austin from the Commission on the Status of Women. In recognition of your dedicated, outstanding service as an ex, student ex-officio member of the Commission on the Status of Women, thank you for your admirable service to the Glendale community. On behalf of the city of Glendale, I wish you continued success on all future endeavors. Zara Sinianyan, Mayor.
Would you like to present to Liz Alford? Yes, please.
This is for Rebecca Alfred from the Commission on the Status of Women. In recognition of your dedicated, outstanding service as student ex-officio member of the Commission of the Status of Women, thank you for your admirable service to the Glendale community. On behalf of the city of Glendale, I wish you continued success on all your future endeavors.
Thank you very much. Would you like to say a few words?
Being on this Commission and watching all the commissioners and really learning from them has been truly an experience that I will never forget. And I will learn all the values, the values that I learned and apply it to my own life. The information that I learned today was very interesting and I'm so happy to hear about all the movements made to make a great impact on our community and change the status of women and really make an impact.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I would also like to second everything that she said. Just another thank you for my time, experience on this Commission. I've, a lot of the information I've learned here, I've passed on to a lot of friends and I've been told that it has helped them greatly, so I thank you for that. And also, watching you all work and I'm very, is very admirable, so thank you.
Thank you very much. Would you like?
Wish you all the best in all your future dreams and aspirations. And I'm very proud of selecting both of you. I was in the interview process and I thoroughly enjoyed that and the, the two of you shined the brightest and I wish you the best.
Thank you so much.
May she do.
I concur, and it's the first time meeting both of you and I'm very proud of you as well. It takes a lot of guts to sit up here and, and be confident of yourselves and speak on behalf of girls your age, so congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do you have any more comments before we adjourn? Because we're going to go into adjourn mode soon. Anything more?
I'm good.
Good, well, I do. So forgive me, I'm going to take a bit of time. We only have a meeting every three months. And I would like to make sure that Commissioner Magrin and our other commissioner is aware of what the Chair has been doing this last three months. So I'm going to go ahead and discuss things. Memorial Day, I attended, I attended the new chief's where, and we expected the new chief to be here. I'll have to call him and find out where he is or where he was. Hopefully, it's nothing bad. Went to Cindy Cleary's retirement from the library, the Chamber of Commerce Gala representing the Commission. The library, the central library, has book talks and I attended many of the book talks. And the consulate of the Armenian culture was introduced to Glendale a couple of months ago and I was invited and attended. And also, the Historical Society Gala and the annual meeting. The reason that we are going is we're going to, we're going representing the Women's Commission and all of these things, hopefully, Ms. Powers and I are going to be able to go over the upcoming events and suggest that the four other commissioners attend some of them also. Because it's important for all of the commissioners to be recognized. And I'm going to make sure that, hopefully, we're out there and people know about the Commission. The Fourth of July celebration was lovely and the Comfort Women also was quite a, was quite a, an event. I think, right now, I'm going to inquire, Ms. Powers, where is our list that we had, that we, we had made out and added and subtracted? Where is that? So that, pardon me?
We have that there, just need to print them.
Okay, so it's?
But we have the updated list, it's the resource guide, the
Yes.
CSW resource guide, yes, we have it, we've updated, just need to print.
We have a couple of students that would certainly be welcoming those lists. Do you know the ones we're talking about?
The Yellow Bookmark Resource Guide, I believe you've received them?
Yes.
I think at your orientation when you came in, yes.
I wanted to know about that one. And then I also would like to know, just as a, as a consideration, and I think I, I did get a little bit on the agenda that you were presenting, what about the idea that council hears from the commissioners? We have a council meeting most every Tuesday night. And one of the commissioners each Tuesday night could possibly go, stand at the dais and talk about one thing that the Commission is thinking about doing or doing. I, I think that might, because we only meet every three months, that might bring some of the things that we're involved in to council on a weekly basis rather than an every-three-month basis. We have five commissioners, so Tuesday night, one of us could go and then the next one and the next one, and you can definitely pick your, your topic. You only have to speak for three minutes. And I think it would be a good idea for council and everyone that watches council to be aware of the Commission and what we're involved in. So I'd really like to discuss that some other time, but it's just an idea. Then I'm going to go ahead to the upcoming events, the Women of Achievements, October 1st at the Casa Hues. There are 27 women that will be honored and I think this, oh goodness, maybe the 28th or 29th year that the women, women have been honored through the Women of Achievement. It's a really phenomenally wonderful event and anyone who needs any information, I'm on the committee that puts it together, they can certainly contact me. There is an art show at Brand Library on September the 8th and the Armenian, the ARS Fair is the 29th and 30th. the 29th and 30th at Civic. There's a home tour from the Historical Society, September 30. October the 11th is the Domestic Violence Event, and the Athletic Hall of Fame happens October 21st. I hope you're getting the idea that there's any number of things that the commission should be involved in. You should be attending these things, or at least one, and then someone else can attend the next one. And it really does, it does speak well for the commission if we're representing the women and girls of Glendale. The Fireman's Lunch, I'm so sorry, Chief Fish, I should have mentioned it when he was here. And there's a Glendale Health Summit, October 25th, and we have a meeting November 8th of this commission. The Empowerment Brunch is November 15th, and I want to wish everybody Happy Thanksgiving on November's 22nd. And that would be, oh, any thoughts or anything that the staff wishes to say?
I just wanted to, on behalf of staff, welcome Commissioner Brusalian to the commission. Thank you so much for your service.
Thank you.
And thank you, ex-officios Austin and Alfred, for your service for the past year, and wish you all the best. And please feel free to reach out to any, I'll speak on behalf of the commissioners, too, I'm sure, any commissioner or staff, if you ever need anything, and we'll definitely put you in touch with the Forensics Lab staff, so you can coordinate something at Hoover High School. So wishing you all the best and welcome. Thank you.
Thank you. Since there are so many events and, and things going on in the next three months, is there a chance that we could get a list of those? I mean, they're all over here, but a quick list of all the events that are upcoming?
Sure, yes, we can pull that from the master calendar on the city website and get that to you.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, absolutely.
Great, thank you, thank you.
And we have to bear in mind also that most of them are priced 100, 125, and we are not, we do not have any budget for attending. So that's, that's something that we have to consider, too. One person over a year going to all of these events.
It's quite costly.
Thank you, yes, it is, it is. Not only financially, but time-wise. So we probably want to take a look at dividing out that attendance.
Sure, thank you.
Well, then, thank you for all your thoughts, and I'm now requesting a motion for adjournment.
Motion to adjourn?
Second?
Second.
Thank you. The meeting is adjourned at?